Good evening. Welcome to the Wilmer City Council Meeting for Monday, April 2nd, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dawkins.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to our citizens who are here and also the citizens who are watching this meeting. Tonight, we have several committee minute reports and also we have a presentation about WilmerFest, which will take place in the month of June. And at the end of the meeting, we have a couple of departmental annual reports. Our city attorney will give his annual report along with Mr. Peterson for the Planning and Development Services. For the councilmembers, are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda for tonight?
Mayor, I just have one item under miscellaneous that I would like to add.
Okay. And I'd like to make mention of a new business in town, so. All right, if there's nothing else, then we'll go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any comments or discussion here? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to pull the planning commission minutes of March 28th.
All right. Anyone else? I would like to pull the zoning appeals board minutes of March 19th for just a brief comment. All right, if those are the only two minutes that will be pulled, those in favor of approving the rest of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. In that consent agenda are the minutes from the hospital, the utilities, the housing and redevelopment authority, the convention visitors bureau, and the minutes of the last city council meeting. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would draw the council's attention to item number 10, the mast orderly annexation. And, Mr. Mayor, I note that Mr. Lawton is here and he's a member of the planning commission. I note that there were two planning commission members that dissented on this orderly annexation, Mr. Beer and Mr. Alvarado. And I'm wondering if either Mr. Peterson or if you choose, Mr. Lawton could talk about what the concerns were on behalf of Mr. Beer and Mr. Alvarado.
Mr. Lawton, are you the chairman of the board of the planning commission?
I'm not the chairman.
You're a member of the planning commission. Are you familiar with this issue?
Yeah.
Do you want to come up and?
I don't know where exactly what.
Why don't you just briefly summarize what the issue is and why you think a couple of members did not support this?
Okay. I'm Jay Lawton, a member of the planning commission for the city of Wilmer. The main concerns negatively towards this annexation had to do with, quite frankly, things that aren't even germane to the annexation as to what was going to go in there. There were some concerns as far as that becoming industrial property, which the city and the comprehensive plan has designated it, should it become part of the city. It's what's called industrial reserve, which is a piece of property that, should it become annexed, at a certain time, it would become industrial property. A lot of that just has to do with access to it. There's only actually one access into that big triangle of property, and we have concerns about traffic flow and maintaining access to that for city services and things. I don't know, the, I guess the main concern was its proximity to the high school and to the civic center. I guess, from my perspective, it's not really that close. It's on the other side of the bypass. It's on the other side of Civic Center Drive. And the access that the city engineer has suggested is further down the road to the west, where there's already an agricultural crossing over the rail spur. So, those were the biggest concerns, I guess, was the proximity to the high school, although, you know, that's a half mile away on the other side of the bypass, so I'm not sure that that's a real big issue.
And the concern, in reading this, there's like 20 trucks that will be coming and going every day from that site, is that correct?
With the proposed use of it?
Right.
Yeah, they're going to have, it would be semi-traffic, which the developers who are looking at the property have indicated to the city that they would work their schedule so they didn't have trucks during those peak times when students are going to and from school.
Is this not a business that, and I'm going to ask you personally, is this not a business that would fit in our new developing industrial park more properly?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Would it not fit more properly in the new industrial park that we're, park that we're developing on the old airport site?
Well, the, oh, you mean for the particular use that's proposed at this point?
Right, the use, right.
The industrial park per se out by the airport doesn't fit their needs. It doesn't have a rail spur, and they're looking at sending things out on rail from their production facility.
I thought most of it was going to go out by truck, just a limited amount.
The indication that we got was that the trucks would be bringing product, the raw materials in, and a lot of it would be going out on rail. They really desired to have a rail spur to use, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Just hold for a second. Bruce, could you make more comment about this and what the project is and where it is and everything?
Well, I think for this discussion, it's important to separate the proposed use from the annexation question. We've got a request to annex property, and if it is annexed, the second step in the process is to evaluate the use that's proposed for the site. The reason this group is in, has requested the annexation of this property is very much like Jay said, it's accessible off the bypass and it's got rail access, and that's something that is really at a premium around the city of Wilmer. This company has, you know, I think, made a very strong showing as to why this site suits their needs. Were it not for the need for rail, they could very well establish themselves in the new industrial park. The commission's discussion involved whether or not industrial uses between the railroad tracks and the bypass was the best use for that property. And there were a couple of planning commission members that still believed that portions of that area should develop for residential uses. I think that would be a mistake. I think the comprehensive plan has shown for a long period of time that the most desirable use for that particular area is industrial because it gives you better control over what goes in there. You can manage traffic volumes better, and you're just going to reduce the amount of traffic going on and off of Civic Center Drive, which is a busy route. We all know that there are limits to how much this site can develop from the north before there is another access out to either Highway 12 or Lakeland Drive required further south. And so, there is a, access is really a limiting constraint for this particular piece of property. But the planning commission did, in my opinion, make the correct decision by recommending the annexation to the council.
Jim, do you want to make any more comments?
That's fine. I would move to approve these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these minutes. Do any councilmembers want to ask any questions about this of either Mr. Peterson or Mr. Lawton? How they've made their comments to the council? Everybody understand? If I could ask just a couple of questions, Bruce, if you could explain it. If the land is annexed in, then the strategy here is the company would then approach the planning commission with a plan to use that land, right?
That's correct. If the property is annexed and zoned industrial as they've requested, to establish the use that's proposed, they would still be required to apply for a conditional use permit, which would have a public hearing before the planning commission, and all the site development criteria would be reviewed: access, density, stormwater controls, onsite traffic, the building construction, building elevations, building aesthetics. All of those issues would be addressed in the course of the conditional use permit review.
And this business is this pelletization idea?
That's correct.
Bill, what is a business, or Bill, I'm sorry, Bruce, where'd Bill come from? Bruce, what does this business look like? Do they have other plants in other places, or?
This particular business would be the first for this individual, and it's actually a family company. They have been involved in the alternate fuel business and in the biomass fuels business, but they have not had a pelletizing plant. They've been more involved in the sales of the hardware, the stoves and furnaces in the past. This building would be approximately 36, I believe, 36 to 38 feet high. The building as proposed would be, I think, around 12,000 to 14,000 square feet, and it would have, it would be a steel building with masonry, about, I don't know, you know, Wainscot height, so it would be, they would try to dress up the building with some masonry. It would look like a manufacturing or a production building. Their plan would be to bring the spur, to bring a siding off this spur so that they could get into the plant with railcars. All the downloading and uploading of product would occur within the building. There would be no outside storage, no dust, no distribution of any product outside.
Do you know anything about the odor control and that kind of a business? Is there an odor issue here?
I can't state that I'm aware that there's an odor involved. They're dealing with all dry product, so there's nothing wet in this process at all.
Okay, because, and I don't know anything about this business, so I'm not going to make any plus or minus kind of comment, but, you know, this council in our city has really invested for the success of the MinWest campus, and we really see that as a kind of a crown jewel for development. And we, whatever we do on that area has to be complementary to developing that campus and the surrounding businesses. And so, I'm expecting that the planning commission will be fully aware of that as they go on with their discussions about this.
Well, that was one of the other attractions to this site, is the synergy between the MinWest Technical Campus and this particular business. This business sees the need for future R&amp;D support that they could get from the campus, so they have been talking back and forth.
Good. All right. Any other comments from councilmembers? If not, there's a motion on the table to accept these minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I asked that the zoning appeals board minutes of March 19th be looked at for just a second. I wanted to point out to the council, if you didn't catch it when you read it, that they elected a chairman for that committee who wasn't present at the meeting. So, it does happen. You know, if you don't show up, you get nominated. So, I wish Mr. Nathan Street well as the chairperson of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm sure he'll do an excellent job. I did have a question about this building issue, this Rockford Construction. Bruce, did you sit in on this meeting?
I was not in attendance at this meeting.
Was there any?
I am familiar with the process.
Okay. They talked, there was a comment, why didn't they build a smaller building if they were having problems with the easements around the edges of the property? What's your take on this, or?
Well, I think in this particular case, besides the fact that it's an irregularly shaped site, the property lines don't run parallel to First Street. The Second Street line is a diagonal line to First Street, so that presented the rear yard issues. But beyond that, I think it's an economic issue. You've got to have a certain amount of square footage in order to generate the gross rents to support the debt for the property.
But didn't he have to, or whoever the owner is here, didn't they have to submit a plan for the building and for the use of the land around the building before he built the building?
Yeah, it's not built yet, so.
Oh, it's?
This would be at the old Family Eye Center site?
Okay, it says, why didn't he build a smaller building that would fit onto the site better? So, he hasn't built it yet.
Right. That was a hypothetical question, you know, why didn't he just downsize his plans and build something smaller?
Okay.
They're planning to demolish the Family Eye Center building on First Street and then replace it with this commercial center.
Okay. So, that's been now approved by the zoning appeals board?
That's correct.
All right. I would ask somebody to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the board of zoning appeals minutes for March 19th. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next, I'd like to welcome Chad Johnson. Chad is the president of the Board of Directors for WilmerFest. And Chad, I understand you have a report, and you're open to questions. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers. I just wanted to touch base with you now that the weather is changing, unfortunately, but spring is here, and WilmerFest is right around the corner. And I believe I was here last fall, and we, or you met the ambassadors from last year, or the current ambassadors for WilmerFest. And I wanted to continue that just with an updating of a view of the city council, at least semi-annually. So, here I am. It's exciting times. I do have a packet on each one of you I got from our website, which is new and looks awesome. There are plenty more pages on there. This is just kind of a gamut of what's on there. And I wanted to bring, the biggest part to your attention is page two, which is the schedule of events. We have gone through some significant transition and changes on our committee and board. We have expanded to over 20 members compared to last year of six to seven, six, seven. So, we've significantly added volunteers, which is wonderful. We still need more, so if you're not busy. Just kidding. So, if you look at page two, some of the changes that we brought forward is we've condensed the week. Normally, in the past, we've started on Tuesday. We are not doing that anymore. We're starting on Wednesday with the flag raising ceremony, kickoff luncheon, and then the senior king and queen coronation on Wednesday. Prior years, the block party was on Wednesday. We've made that change with the J.C.'s to Thursday evening in cooperation with the Kitty Parade. And the Kitty Parade is going to be moving, tentatively moving to downtown. So, we're going to try to keep everything downtown with the Kitty Parade and the block party. Hopefully, that's going to work. We've kind of, I've had some discussions with Kevin, as well as some of the other parties involved, and we think it's going to work. We need to fine tune that, for sure. We'd like to keep everything localized, and with the attendance of the Kitty Parade, they're more likely to go down to the block party at the same point in time. So, we try, we kind of want to keep that all in one area. So, that's one of the, one of the big changes this year. As well as Friday, normally, it's the International Banquet. It is a public event. It is primarily geared towards our international side, along with the visiting dignitaries that show up that evening, which is at the KEC. But then, following that, this year, we've added a Queen's Ball. Something brand new this year. We want to kind of designate that for our reigning queen and royalty that we have. So, that will be an additional event that we put on this year. And then, the Saturdays, obviously, jam-packed like normal. But the Saturday changes, we've kind of, we've brought everything that's geared towards our beach party, meaning the fishing derby and the beach, or the sand sculptures are all going to be on Saturday afternoon after the parade, before the beach party gets started. So, we're trying to keep everything that's in the same relatively, or the same events during the same timeframe on the same day. And the changes that we've proposed this year, as far as condensing the week, we try to, we want to try to get this as a, not a regional event, but a more attended event from outside, similar to the Minneapolis, or the Aquatennial down in the cities, you know, something like that, where people from Alexandria or Marshall or whatever can come up here for a couple of days and spend their time. Not saying that'll happen, but who knows? Someday, we would like that to happen. So, one other key thing, we did change our royalty to WilmerFest ambassadors for the city of Wilmer. We feel that's more of an appealing name for the amount of traveling, amount of outside cities that they go to as far as they've, our royalty went to Canada, Winnipeg, this past, or this past winter. So, that's just a quick update. A lot of changes that we've made, some additive personnel, and we're looking forward to, again, a wonderful year this year. So, I open up to any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Chad, for your description of all the schedule. Councilmembers, any questions here? I have a question about the Queen's Ball. Is that open to the public then, too?
That will be, it's an open public event, yep.
Is that likely to be at the KEC or some other place?
Yes. Yeah, what we're going to do is, we're going to kind of switch down the International Banquet. It was a very wide-open space prior, a space that wasn't being used, so we can condense that down. And then, at the same point in time, as soon as that, and the banquet is done, the Queen's Ball starts. So, it'll be simultaneously.
Good. And then, you mentioned extra staff. Are you hiring people?
No, no, no. Extra volunteers, more volunteers, yeah. Yep.
All right. Anything else? Councilmember Fagerly?
Will there be a carnival this year? Amusement rides or anything?
With the amount of changes that we added this year, we don't want to put on too much. That is something that we've been talking about the past two years. One thing is, we need to look for a site that is compatible for that. Normally, in the past, it's been downtown, and then previously, it was at the Candy Mall. And the Candy Mall has had smaller versions of that, I think it was last year, if I remember right, in the parking lot. And we've had discussions with them to see if we can possibly do that again. But it's just, number one, is trying to find a decent operation that fits our needs, so.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming, Chad.
You bet.
Does the board ever receive any verbal expressions of changing the name from WilmerFest back to CoffeeFest? I hear that frequently.
It has come up, not so much to the board specifically, but hearsay. We have heard that. I can tell you right now, there's no discussions of us doing that. It would, if somebody, you know, if it was brought to us by a concerned citizen, we would definitely hear that, and we know that it's out there. But I think our primary concern right now is to get this established and looking at that potentially in the future. But Coffee, the CoffeeFest is still part of WilmerFest, and as far as the coffee tradition, but it's not, we're not looking at a name change per se as we speak, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Chad, thank you. I know it's a great deal of work for you and the volunteers, and I know councilmembers and myself appreciate how this brings positive attention to this community, and it really allows Wilmer to put its best foot forward in terms of displaying our community to the public at large. And having a community festival like this takes a great deal of organization year-round, and you guys are doing a super job. So, keep us informed and keep us close to what the plans and the schedules are. How are you doing with your budget?
Currently, the budget is okay. We really don't have a lot of expenses up front right now. There are, you know, we're ordering some preliminary stuff, but we have, our marketing and advertising committee has put together, will be putting together a pamphlet that will be going out, and we're restructuring how we're going to be doing that. Geering more towards finding significant sponsors for each event, that type of thing. And that will be starting, actually, tomorrow is our first meeting on that, so. But from a budget standpoint, we're very positive about it this year, so.
One other question, Chad. I know the Minneapolis Aquatennial has a strong relationship with Winnipeg. The fact that our people went up there this winter, does that create the possibility that they'll come down here?
Winnipeg has confirmed they will be here.
Really? For the grand parade and everything?
Yep.
Are they bringing a float or anything, or?
That, I'm not sure. I know it's their royalty for sure, and they'll be coming down, I believe it is Friday, if I'm not mistaken, but they will be here. As I said earlier, we've, our royalty went up there, along with Deb Larson, which is our royalty coordinator, and another individual on our board. And we've kind of reestablished that relationship that we've had in the past, so they will be coming down, as well as Aquatennial. They're usually here every year, so.
Well, that's great. Aquatennial, Winnipeg, Montevideo, Aberdeen, is that?
Yep.
Kind of the group then?
Yep.
That's super. All right. Good job, Chad. Keep us informed.
Thank you.
Next is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Does anyone wish to address the council or the mayor tonight? If not, we'll move on to number nine on the agenda, which are the Public Works Safety Committee Report for March 27th. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is the airport self-fueling regulations, and the committee had a proposal which had been revised in regards to self-fueling regulations at the new airport. Staff's recommendations differed from those of the Airport Commission, including provisions for procedures to follow in the event of a fuel spill and the requirement for a permitting process. After significant discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed to adopt the Airport Commission's recommendation for self-fueling from portable tanks and include staff's recommendations to develop procedures to be followed in the event of a fuel spill. Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion for the recommendation to go along with the recommendation from the committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the Airport Commission's recommendations for self-fueling from portable tanks and procedures to be followed in the event of a fuel spill. Comment? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask of staff a couple of questions, if I could. There was a recommendation from staff, among other things, that the presence of a fire extinguisher that was serviced no longer than 12 months ago be required, and Chief, I don't know if you want to respond to this or not, but I guess I'm looking at the Airport Commission recommendations that are being moved here tonight, and it's simply requiring for the presence of some fire extinguisher. And I guess one of my questions is going to be, do we have enough oversight from a public safety standpoint to be comfortable with this recommendation from the Airport Commission?
I think if you look at the Airport Commission's recommendations, the thing that was added was the use of a fire extinguisher and the fact that that fire extinguisher would be serviced. The part of having it serviced is not added into what they've talked about here, but it's the understanding that if they have a fire extinguisher, that it would be a serviced one, and one that was in service and had been serviced within the last 12 months. So, I'm comfortable with that particular language. As far as the rest of the stuff there, I think, you know, staff's recommendation was more stringent than what you see here, but, you know, we're taking the direction of council, what council wants us to do here. Again, this applies to the 119 gallons or less, and so, those are the recommendations we're taking.
But certainly, staff had good reason to look at a little bit more stringent requirements, I presume. I mean, from a public safety standpoint, are we doing everything that we should be doing if we adopt the Airport Commission recommendation?
We had prepared a, an ordinance, if you will, that was more detailed than what is in front of you. We need to understand that at the size of the fuel that's being distributed here, there really is nothing in the fire code that identifies or anything we can put our fingers on and say that you have to abide by this certain standard. What we're basically doing here is we made, the initial recommendation, which was presented to the Airport Commission, they made some revisions, came back to us, and then we made some additional.
then we made some additional recommendations back behind that. Basically, what we took, took out of our recommendation was the fact of the permitting process. So, I think that, you know, we need to understand that the fuelers are people that have been operating for quite some time, and hopefully, nothing will happen out there.
And a question for our city attorney, if I might. Rich, if you look at this, is the city, in your, in your opinion, adequately covered in terms of liability if we allow these private fuelers to do what they're doing without a permit?
Only if there would be insurance required.
And this recommendation from the Airport Commission is not requiring of some type of certificate holding the city harmless?
Not what I read in here, does not require insurance.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we want ourselves to be covered from, from, from a potential accident? I mean, I was at the hearing, and I understood that, from all accounts, nothing has ever happened. But by the same token, the city of San Francisco hasn't been leveled by an earthquake in 101 years either. But that doesn't mean it can't happen. I, I fail to understand why we wouldn't be covering ourselves properly from a liability standpoint here.
Insurance would be the only way to assure yourselves that you are covered.
So, we would, in order to do that properly, we would need to require some type of certificate of insurance from the fuelers holding the city harmless?
Correct. Or covering in the event of a loss, not necessarily holding harmless, but the insurance certificate would say they do have insurance covering them and the city in the event there is a spill, in the event there's an explosion, fire, whatever.
Okay. And that, and that seems perfectly reasonable to me. Mr. Mayor, I would move that we amend, excuse me, amend the Airport Condition, Commission recommendations to include the requirement that the fuelers require, provide a certificate of insurance covering both themselves and the city in the event of a, of an incident.
There's a motion? Is there a second to that motion? I, I don't, I can't make a motion, but I would certainly suggest that the council consider that. You know, we, we require insurance for everything in the city, for parades, for events at the arenas, even when the baseball stadium is used by outside groups, they have to show certificates of insurance. Why wouldn't we include insurance certificates for private people using the airport? Why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you want these people to, to show insurance for what they're doing out there?
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Most of them own their own hangars. Are they insured? Do they have fire and wind coverage? Even though they rent the land?
The hangar owners do provide us a copy of the certificate of insurance showing that they have their building covered for their losses. We are not listed as an additional insured, so there's no coverage for the city of Wilmer should any event happen like Mr. Gardner discussed.
Okay. How about, it was mentioned that some people drive their pickups with these gasoline barrels in the back of their pickups, and they park them in city parking lots. Do we have to cover, have them show proof of insurance too if they wanna park in a city parking lot?
You mean throughout town?
Mm-hmm.
No, sir.
Well, if we're gonna do it with the airport for that, we should do it for this too then, shouldn't we?
Well, I guess you'd have to take a look at where they would store the vehicle.
Right in the city parking lot. Public parking lots-
But not long-term. We've had pickups at the old airport for months with a tank sitting there. So, you could look at the likelihood of a problem, a leak, the owner's not there watching it, and he saw 100 gallons spilled out, and no real fault of theirs or vandalism or anything. PCA would simply be out saying, "We're the owner, clean it up." It'd be nice to have a certificate of insurance that said, "Well, you're the fuel vendor, you clean it up." But, you know, we have to make yourselves comfortable that we have our concerns properly addressed, and the insurance has been the normal way we've had those addressed in all our other permitting activities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Clarification on that. I'm, I'm not sure I understood the first question that Rick asked, but if his concern was with the hangars, if they have a lease with the city and have their hangar on city-owned land, the lease requires that they have a liability policy, but that only covers the land that they're leasing from the city. Would not cover the fueling activity, which would be off the leased land.
Okay. What if someone flies into the airport and fuels by themselves using our equipment, and it's their mistake for a spill?
I don't think there's any self-fueling with city equipment.
That's correct answer.
There is.
We have no city equipment out there that fuels.
Well, how do they get the fuel then?
Fixed base operator will handle them. But if there's, if there's an event such as that with our city-constructed fuel system, our insurance would be involved there.
But if a private fueler has an incident due to whatever, we could be kind of hanging out there in the wind, is what I'm hearing from staff.
Well, customarily, if there's a concern and everybody's pointing fingers, they always point a finger at the municipal government.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Does anybody wish to second the motion that Mr. Gardner made to amend this agreement? Does anybody want to second that?
I'll call for the question of the original motion.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
What's your point of order?
The point of order would be that to call the question is, there's, there's really no question to call here, first of all. Because that would be simply to, for a vote on my motion, which we don't even have a second to yet.
Right.
To call the question is, is not to simply limit debate. Now, I wondered if I saw one of the council members ready to second the motion or ask a question, and-
I've asked. Is there anybody who wants to second the motion? If not, the motion dies for the lack of a second. All right. So then we're back to any comments or questions from the council members about this recommendation. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask our city staff. In the, in the Airport Commission's recommendations, there's no language that talks about permits or fees for those fueling, using private fueling mechanisms. And what was the discussion about why those fees or permits were not allowed? Mick, do you, can you shed some light on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think you should ask your question of the Public Works Committee that, our, our recommendations included the permit. There, it was the committee that removed.
Okay, Doug, can you comment on that? Why, why was that taken out of the discussion?
I'd like to make a point of order before that. I, I had called the question on the original motion because the other motion failed for a lack of second. If I'm not mistaken, that means we vote on it without any further discussion.
Mr. Attorney, can you clarify that for us here?
Was there a motion? I wasn't aware there was a motion.
Doug made the motion, I seconded.
I made, I made the original motion, and it was seconded from the committee.
Then that ends the discussion and the vote is proper.
He can call, call for a vote without any more discussion about this?
He can call for the question. Sure he can.
All right. I, I'm curious as to why you don't want any discussion?
'Cause I called the question.
All right. Calls the question, there's no more discussion. The motion then is to approve the Airport Commission recommendations. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Mr. Attorney, I'm gonna veto that decision because I think there should be some discussion about these matters, and so I'm vetoing it.
Charter requires you do that in writing, so I think it's within 36 hours of the time the clerk presents you with the minutes.
All right, I'll, I'll submit something to the city clerk tomorrow then. I think, I think this merits more discussion. There are some things here that, that I think are quite controversial when we have staff making strong recommendations, and those recommendations are being ignored by citizens and by the city council, without any discussion, without any discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
This ordinance was not brought from the public. I'm tired of our, a lot of our ordinances coming from staff and not from the public, and that was my reasoning for doing that. And, and we had this discussion at the Public Works Safety Committee meeting, and everybody was in agreement, even staff, after we had recommended this. They, they accepted it. But to me, this is more government pushed on people and other fee for, for honest tax paying, abiding citizens that's been fueling their own planes for 30, 40 years, and there's only eight or nine of them. Anyway, it came from staff, it was a staff recommendation, and we concluded that the Airport Commission was the correct way to go, adding one paragraph, and that's all I have to say.
Well, let me ask the council members then a rhetorical question. This, this council has always been very consistent in discussion that the city should try to, when they have a facility or programs, we try to generate revenue to help offset the costs of facilities or programs. We do that with everything, from the Senior Citizen Center, to the arenas, to the Aquatic Center, to the baseball stadium, anything that the city owns and operates, and if groups want to use it, just about in all cases, there is some kind of a fee or a permit established. Even when we have parades, we have fees and permits. If you have a vending machine, you have a permit. Why, why does the council not want to be consistent in that approach to offsetting the operational costs of the airport when there's a legitimate way to do that that is not a burden to those who use the airport? Unless the council is beginning to look at getting rid of fees all over the place and, and then putting the burden totally back on the, on the taxpayer. But the council, over the years, has always looked to those who use the operations of facilities or programs, and then charging, whether it's a baseball team fee, or it's a permit for a parade, or the Lions Club using the Senior Citizen Center, they all get charged fees. Wouldn't that be consistent with this discussion about the airport? Why is this different? Why, why is the council being inconsistent in this matter compared to everything else in the city? Would anybody like to respond? Councilmember Faerley.
Well, we were told the, the pilots are licensed through the state, and with that license, they can fuel their own planes.
Mm-hmm. I don't doubt that. I'm, I'm sure that's true.
Okay.
I'm sure that's true.
But then we were told there's some that keep the fuel oil, or the gas barrel in the back of their pickups, and they can drive around the entire state. They don't need a permit or anything like that. Like I said, there's one guy that parks his vehicle in a city parking lot during the day. He's at work. That's more dangerous, being out in the open, than having it parked out at the airport. And we don't have a permit fee for that. Is that correct?
I, I don't think we do, but-
No, we don't have.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And the liability part, that wasn't even mentioned at the committee meeting. Have an insurance.
And, but the council tonight says that's not important.
Well, you would think that that would've been part of their lease agreement when we negotiated fees. I assume there was liability insurance in their lease. Now, we're, we're finding out that there isn't?
Well, but the fueling issue wasn't part of the lease on the hangars. That, that's an issue that came up later. Those leases were established for the use of the hangars on city-owned property.
Mm-hmm.
Fueling wasn't part of that discussion.
And some of them fuel in their hangars.
I know, I know they do.
So, you, I would've thought that would've been part of the lease. If you were a private owner and you had an apartment building or something like that, that would be part of the lease. You would require your tenants to have insurance coverage. So, where are our professional staff people that drew up the lease?
We don't allow them to fuel in their hangars, never have.
It's the way it sounded at the committee meeting. They drive their vehicles up into the hangar, and, so maybe we need to look at the whole issue again, and actually go out there and visit the site and see what the heck is going on out there. I mean, our airport manager, she didn't say anything. Fire chief didn't really say anything, though.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it, this isn't, I, you'll never convince me that this has anything to do with a $20 fee. I think it's bigger than that. With regard to the insurance issue, if you go back and look at the original ordinance that was drafted and presented to the Airport Commission by staff, you'll see the requirements for insurance provisions in that ordinance. Why wasn't staff saying much at the Public Works meeting? Well, if you look at the original proposed ordinance and what the Airport Commission recommended to committee, it's been watered down to the point, there really isn't much to argue about there anymore. When the committee made the decision to recommend that regulation in that form to the council, yeah, staff, we didn't jump up and down and say, "Well, you can't do that." We accepted the decision, and we're prepared to move on. That doesn't necessarily mean we agree with everything.
Councilmember Reese. My understanding when I left the meeting and the discussion that we had as a committee was that the only thing that I understood, and I guess I'm talking to the rest of the committee members, was that we removed the permit fee. Nothing else. That was the only thing that I understood. When the issue of holding the city harmless on a spill and having insurance for that, I never heard a discussion on that. I was not aware of that. The only thing I understood was that we were removing the permit fee. Is that correct?
Councilmember Anderson.
That's, that's, that's pretty much correct, but I think we're maybe getting way carried away above and beyond what we need to, because all we did was took the permit fee out. It says right in there, their recommendations that the city will not be held liable. It's, it's written right in there now. I'm the one that made the comment at the committee meeting that it's, you can write that in there, I don't know if it's gonna hold up or not, but that's in there. So, we do have some protection. We did ask that, that the provision be added in terms of what they do in case of a spill, because that's a significant event, and we need to make sure that that's handled properly. We asked that there be a written protocol, what they do and how they handle various different things, including spills. So, I, you know, I don't think that we're leaving the city way out on, on a limb in terms of liability. I don't think at all. And, and I would agree with Councilmember Reese, all we did is took the permit fee out of the ordinance.
And, and the reason that was taken out, again, was?
Through petition of the users. They were at our meeting, and we felt, as Councilmember Christiansen had stated before, that was another fee. We didn't see the reason for it as long as the city was covered, and-
So, what, what will the council consider if another group comes forward here and says, "We'd like you to take away the fees for us to use, use the Senior Citizen Center"? Or, "We'd like you to take away the fees that, you know, for our softball league, or our next hockey tournament. We don't wanna pay those fees."
I think that's a whole different subject, Mr. Mayor.
You, you think it is?
I do.
I'm not so sure. I'm not so sure. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we take a look at paragraph three and, and understanding that these are minimum standards, paragraph three says that "The city of Wilmer shall assume no liability in event of an aircraft accident due, due to fuel contamination from a fuel source other than a city-owned facility." This, this does not cover us. This does not cover us, the way I'm hearing it from the city attorney. This does not cover us in any other event, whether it be a spill, whether it be a fire, property damage whatsoever. And that's, that's all I'm asking that we consider to, in order to cover the city. I think the permit fee should be in there too, but, you know, that, you know, that's probably not going to happen. But I really believe that it's a minor thing and really almost a technical thing to just require that the city be an additional insured or whatever it is that the insurance folks are going to want, so that we're covered just in case something happens. It's not about anything else other than that.
All right.
Did the, question, did the removal of the permit remove, the permit fee removes the requirement to be covered? I guess...
No, that was removed from the original draft that was presented to the commission.
So long before it even came to us?
All right. Can somebody explain, how many private fuelers are there at the airport? Marv, do you know that?
At the meeting, they told us there was about eight, but in previous conversations, they told us there was probably fourteen to fifteen, so someplace between eight and fifteen is what I would guess.
And they all have a fueling mechanism, a tank or a tank on a truck or something?
Well, they have, some of them have tanks on trucks, some of them have tanks on trailers, some of them simply use a five-gallon gas can. Depending upon the type of fuel they're using. Experimental Aircraft Association, a lot of those people just use a five-gallon gas can.
And where's that?
That's how their gas comes.
Where's that fuel stored?
We were told they generally take it off-site.
Generally take it off-site, meaning sometimes they don't?
Well, we know that there's been fuel tanks out there, so I guess I'm not going to say they're taken off-site. They told us they take them off-site, but, you know, we have seen the tanks out there, so...
All right. So now the... All right, I guess we move on then. Doug, come back to you then.
Second item on the agenda was a request from Bethel Church for its third annual concert series, which will start June 5th this year. And it will take place each Tuesday through July from 12:15 to 12:45 and the concerts will be held on Becker Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Street. And then, just like it was before, that if it rains, it will be moved inside of Bethel Church. So I would move the recommendation of the committee, Mr. Mayor, to approve the street closure request for the concert series.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the street closure request from Bethel Church for their Tuesday concerts. Comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
The next item was a final pay for a project to Dunick Brothers Incorporated for the second grading and draining project at our new airport. Includes two previously approved change orders and a final payment is the retainage and the punch list items are complete. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the project as complete, issue final payment in the amount of $99,740.41 to Dunick Brothers Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the airport grading and drainage project and award payment of $99,740.41 to Dunick Brothers. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
In regards to that same project, we have a final pay request from HNTB for that same, exact same project and I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve the final payment to HNTB in the amount of $727.77.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to pay HNTB $727.77. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next was another final pay for project 0607, the contractor being the, our own municipal utilities. This is for street lighting in Valley Brook, Second Street Northwest, and then the walkpath lighting along 30th Street Northwest. The project has been, the staff was recommending acceptance of the project and issuance of final payment of the 5% retainage. I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the project and issue final payment to the MUC in the amount of $1,808.16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to make final payment for project 0607, the street lighting project, to make the payment to Wilmer Municipal Utilities in the amount of $1,808.16. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item is in regards to bids that were opened on March 21st for the signal system at 19th Avenue and Fifth Street Southeast and also some miscellaneous traffic signal work at that same intersection or at 19th Avenue and First Street. Four bids were received. The engineer's estimate was for $220,700. The low bidder was Granite Ledge in the amount of $205,820 and I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to award the project to them and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign or enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Wilmer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to enter into an agreement for project 0705 for the signal system and award it to Granite Ledge Electrical Contractors in the amount of $205,820. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then, as we all know, 2007 is the year that the city is doing our seal coating. We had four quotes. The low quote was from Caldwell, Caldwell Asphalt from Hawick. And I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to award the contract to Caldwell Asphalt Company Incorporated and authorize the city administrator and the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Wilmer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to award a contract to Caldwell Asphalt Company for seal, uh...
Seal coating.
Seal coating. Comment about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, we had two miscellaneous items, one of them being the, even though we had a lot of frustrations here around this table in regards to our new airport, we can be proud in the fact that our new municipal airport has received an award and for outstanding leadership in the promotion of aviation for 2006. And the award will be presented to the city of representatives at the Minnesota Council of Airports on April 13th, 2007. For information, Mr. Mayor. The committee then also discussed updates to the study of flooding problems, Candy High Avenue and 10th Street Southwest, and Bar Engineering is continuing its analysis of that area. That is the conclusion of the minutes, Mr. Mayor, unless there's questions. I file, move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next are the Labor Relations Committee report of March 28th. Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Labor Relations Committee met on the 28th. Two items that we discussed, actually three. Item number one, MUC Chairman Bob Bonowitz discussed with us a proposed employment agreement with Mike Nicholls to continue serving as general manager on a limited basement basis following an announced retirement of April 7th, 2007. The intent is to allow for an orderly transition to a new general manager, possibly coming along sometime, I believe Mr. Bonowitz indicated, by June. The committee sought some clarification on the total cost of the package and hours worked and it was agreed that the MUC would provide specific language and we have that in this agreement, limits the agreement to 438 hours through the period ending August 2008. It is likely that that will be, those hours will be worked more on the front end and that the package has a salary value of $21,900. We were talking about approximately $20,000 before and this is a further clarification. Following discussion, it was moved, second and passed, and I will move that the council improve the employment agreement with Mr. Nicholls as revised.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the city council approve the employment agreement with Mr. Nicholls as revised. Further comment or questions about this? Is this a resolution, Kevin, or just a motion?
Simple motion.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Item number two, the committee received, for information, a summary of a staff review of the Police Civil Service Commission rules and regulations. The commission had directed staff to conduct this review, which they do periodically, and make recommendations for any updates or changes. Now, the analysis included an observation that the council may want to at least have a discussion as to whether or not the city should continue to have a police civil service commission. It was noted that the commission was created many years ago to ensure fair treatment for police employees. It was also noted that there are other numerous federal and state organizations in place to provide those rights and protections for the city personnel, police personnel. And it was pointed out that there was no record of any disciplinary hearings in front of the commission, being that most work-related issues, disciplinary and so forth, are generally resolved through the collective bargaining grievance procedure process. One final observation from staff suggests that the hiring and promotional process for patrol officers is unnecessarily bogged down and that the city is at a competitive disadvantage in recruiting and hiring the best possible candidates because we have an extra layer of, an extra few steps that you have to go through in order to actually hire a candidate. Our city administrator requested that the council carefully consider this matter and we agreed that we should wait for position statements from the police commission members as well as the local law enforcement community and the bargaining unit prior to making any final recommendations, and this matter was for information only. Item number three, city administrator presented to the committee for approval a proposed employment agreement with ASME number 559 Public Works. The agreement falls in line with the other bargaining units that have come to terms, calls, covers the period January 1st of this year through December 31st of 2009 and it calls for an annual wage adjustment of 3%. Following review and some discussion, it was moved, second and passed, and I will move that the council approve a three-year agreement with ASME 559 Public Works as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the council approve a three-year agreement with ASME number 559 Public Works as it's presented here. Further comment? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no further questions, I'd move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back to item number two and ask someone to tell me in paragraph three, it says unnecessarily bogged down. What does unnecessarily bogged down mean?
Mr. Dawkins, members of the city council, I'm not sure if I would have used the term unnecessarily bogged down, but I think that it does slow the process. If you take into account that for us to certify three names for hiring to the hiring authority through the police commission, that takes four commission meetings. And just getting three people together at a mutual agreed-upon time can slow that down by several days. And that didn't used to be a problem back, probably when I was hired when there were 300 applicants and it wasn't nearly as competitive in trying to get the top candidates. But now, a few days here and there can make a difference in whether or not you get your number one candidate or if you settle for your number three. And that was my comment in my memo to Mr. Schmidt when I said it may unnecessarily delay the process. Not only the number of commission meetings, we have to have to certify those three names, but the requirement in the statute on some of the timelines that are used. My colleague down the hallway can hire people in half the time that we can.
And it's my understanding that you also have to have a unanimous vote of the council, is that correct?
That is what chapter 419 requires if you want to abolish a police commission. And if I could just comment, the police commissions that I have worked with in the last seven and a half years have been excellent. Nothing in my memo was stimulated by anything that they did or any conflict that we have. It just seems that we have a lot of layers of regulation here for the hiring, retaining, promotion of police officers.
Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, in terms of the process, if you have a list of, I believe it's what, three candidates and all of a sudden two of them aren't available, you actually have to go through this process again, don't you, in order to have a full?
Correct.
List of candidates for, to be presented to the city administrator?
That is my understanding, Mr. Gardner. Yes, you need three viable candidates to choose from. And if you do lose one or two of your certified candidates in the process, you have to background another one.
Because, because you, the commission is supposed to come up with three names.
Correct. The statute provides them to come up with three names to certify to the appointing authority.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Jim, anything else?
No, thank you.
Steve, anything else?
No.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is the consideration of bids for project number 0706, 2007, street lighting. Mel, would you explain that for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, earlier today, we took bids for the street lighting in the Waterview Business Park. This is the sixth contract within the park. This is the sixth and final contract. We had five bidders.
Because, because you end, the commission is supposed to come up with three names?
Correct. The statute provides them to come up with three names to certify to the appointing authority.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Jim, anything else?
No, thank you.
Steve, anything else?
No.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is the consideration of bids for project number 0706, 2007, street lighting. Mel, would you explain that for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, earlier today, we took bids for the street lighting in the Waterview Business Park. This is the sixth contract within the park, and this is the sixth and final contract. We had five bidders, 30 lights this entails, a little over one and a quarter miles of street. Design Electric Incorporated out of St. Cloud is the apparent low bidder, $82,570, which is below the engineer's estimate of, right at $110,000. So it's our recommendation to award the bid to Design Electric.
I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution and award a contract to Design Electric Incorporated of St. Cloud in the amount of $82,570. Further comment about this? Was there an estimate, Mel?
110, he said.
110. Any other comments about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is the consideration of new on-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor and non-renewal of liquor licenses. Kevin, do you want to explain that one?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, you have before you a new application for EKA Hospitality, Inc., doing business as The New Fireside. They are planning to have a large dining hall near their newly opened convenience store. The application is for an on-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor. The documents have been reviewed by the police chief, and everything is found in order, and because the sales are less than $25,000, they have signed the affidavit of that, and they're not required to have insurance until that threshold is met. So everything has been in order, and staff is recommending that we approve this application. And just for further information, prior to the renewal of the ones we're going to handle in a minute, two of the establishments have chosen not to renew their licenses after April 25th. Bonavilla Rositas is going to discontinue both their on-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor and their wine license, and the Liquor Mart will be closing its doors and selling its inventory by the end of the license period. So staff recommendation is to approve The New Fireside.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the license for EKA Hospitality or The New Fireside. Chief, have you had a chance to review this, and do you, is there any hesitation on your part?
No, sir.
Thank you. And then also acknowledging some licenses are not being renewed. Further comment about this? Councilmember Dawkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, you indicated that The New Fireside, that their sales, is that annual, less than $25,000?
Correct.
Do you have any idea what the typical sales would be in other, I mean, this doesn't seem like a lot of?
No. This and the Valley Golf Club signed the affidavit. State law allows them with those low sales to not carry the high insurance. What the rest of them are? 20 times that, probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Isn't, isn't part of this so that The New Fireside just opened, and so their sales haven't built up yet? But once they reach 25, then they, it kicks in the higher insurance requirement?
Let's not get that confused a little bit. The new, there's also a convenience store there, and we do not allow off-sale 3.2 malt liquor in that convenience store.
Right.
This is in the, like, the dining hall?
The lounge.
Next to that.
Where the dances are.
Well, they'll have DJs, and then they will sell 3.2 percent malt liquor. Those annual sales he's estimating aren't going to be that significant at this point. If they approach that, things have to change.
Okay. All right. I just want to comment to the public that I was out there Saturday night and walked through the establishment, the lounge where the dancing was going on. It was very crowded and very orderly. They have security hired who are inside the facility, and I'd like to congratulate Asim, who is the owner and manager of that entire building, and for opening up that new convenience store, which adds another business to the north side of our community. And I wish him well on the lounge and the dancing and the shows that he expects to be putting in there. He does plan to expand and open up the banquet hall after he opens up the kitchen. He hasn't quite, he isn't quite ready to open up the kitchen, so the banquet hall is still empty, but that's in his plans for future use and development. So we wish him very well and hope he's very successful with that business. We need to vote on this, right? Is that a roll call, Kevin?
It is.
Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Which one is the Liquor Mart? Which business is that?
I just asked her on, too.
Downtown.
Right downtown by the old bakery.
Fridas.
By Glow Tanning.
Oh, okay. He's closing up, huh?
All right. Next on the agenda is a consideration of liquor license renewals. Kevin, you want to handle that?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, you have before you on the executive summary a list of all the on-sale liquor establishments, club on-sale, on-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor, off-sale liquor establishments, and wine establishments that have submitted their applications for renewal. The complete investigation is not conducted on all of these at this time, and we're just recommending that we, and we anticipate they'll all be fine, and everything's paid in full, that we move to approve the renewal of all of these from April 25th, 2007 through April 25th, 2008, contingent upon the city attorney signing off on their certificate of insurance, and the police department's investigations are all complete. We're running a little short on time for the state of Minnesota Liquor Control Division, and we want to make sure when these come in the next two, three days, that we can move them all into the state offices before the next council meeting. So that is staff's recommendation to approve all those that are listed on the summary.
Thank you, Kevin. Move to approve, subject to approval and an investigation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all these license, licenses applications, subject to the city attorney's approval of the certificate of insurance and the police department's investigation. Comment, Mr. Christianson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, Jim, the, the 3.2 sites, they also get annual ID checks? And so The New Fireside will also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments here? This is a roll call. Go ahead, Kevin.
Councilmember Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Bruce, do you want to explain that?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, the final plat before you this evening is virtually identical to the preliminary plat that you approved two weeks ago. The additions that have been made involve easements as requested by the utilities and the Public Works Department. The draft declarations required by the planning commission have been submitted, and it would be the recommendation of staff that the final plat be approved with the condition stipulated by the planning commission, that being that signatures not be affixed to the plat until the city assessor has formally approved the declarations.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat called The Sterling Apartments with the condition stipulated by the planning commission. Further comment? Those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consideration of an ordinance to rezone Chapel Central Incorporated. Bruce, would you explain that?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, Chapel Central, Inc. has proposed the rezoning of a residential property that is east of their current commercial site on Gorton Avenue. The planning commission conducted a public hearing at their meeting last Wednesday and has recommended to the council that the rezoning be approved, and it was found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Bruce. Counsel?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second that the council recommends that an ordinance be introduced for a public hearing on April 16th for the, to rezone some lands from R2 to I2. Further comment? Those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Before we go to the department reports, Doug, you wanted to say something tonight?
Well, yeah, there's, I was just going to, I was looking for a discussion in regards to the brief from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities in regards to the phosphorus bill and the rule that's being established of 1 milligram per liter phosphorus. And the coalition is, well, Moorhead's kind of heading it up. They're, they're going to be spending some money in an initiative to fight the MPCA's statewide phosphorus limit, and at the hearing, the MPCA maintained the delaying implementation of the rule for six months, and it would, they, they said that it would cost the state as much as $750,000. However, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities believe that the MPCA's claim is unfounded, and the, they just wanted the bill to go to the Environment Finance Committee. The Coalition Board of Directors voted to send a letter to the MPCA and legislative leaders and committee members explaining why the testimony they felt was misleading. City of Moorhead is investing in, in this fight, and I guess I would like to have some discussion whether or not the council would also consider joining this, this fight in regards to the phosphorus limit that is being set by the MPCA, and, and I've talked to the city administrator in regards to this, and I believe he said it was estimated it'd be $2,000 to maybe $3,000 cost to the city of Wilmer.
Well, that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's what the coalition members who are actively pursuing this are suggesting. I still am awaiting word from the League of Minnesota Cities, because I know the League is also working very hard to, to address this issue and, and get those delayed for a year or so. And I haven't heard back from our legislators as well, so I really am not in a position tonight to, you know, recommend one way or another as to whether or not we should contribute to this cause. I mean, I, I think it's a worthwhile cause, but I'm kind of hoping it won't be necessary that the legislators will see the light and do something about it without having communities incur these additional costs, trying to convince them that this is the right thing to do. Perhaps if you referred it to committee by that time, we will have heard back from the League and, and our legislators, and might have a better idea of how we should proceed.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I just wanted to have a discussion here, and I think that, and bringing it to the attention of the council, and I don't know if that should go to finance or if it should go to Public Works, Public Safety, but it should be referred to committee.
I think I would refer to Public Works, Public Safety.
I agree.
When it has to do with standards of water quality, and you may want to incorporate a discussion with utility, utilities on that also, you know, who control the water flows here.
Well, this is more for discharge than for, than water, potable water. I don't think it involves that at all.
Okay.
I know that our staff at the plant also is trying to get some input from the organizations that they're involved with, so we should have a lot better information in another week or so.
Well, I would, yes, I, I would make, well.
Just, just direct staff?
Yeah, just direct staff, that's fine, to refer this to Public Works, Public Safety.
Any, everybody agree with that? Any problem with that? Where this gets to be a, a very important discussion is that if the state puts into law certain standards for water quality, those standards then become the rule of the land, and if communities don't meet those standards, then the, the state or the, the MPCA can hold back agreements, even things related to economic development projects. And that's the concern, is not, not that people don't want good quality water, but they want to have a real solid reason for why they're changing these standards, and sometimes the reason or the rationale for the new standards isn't always spelled out. And that's what I think the coalition and the League are both striving to do, is what's, what's the reasoning here?
I think the big difference, Mr. Mayor, and council members between us and Moorhead is Moorhead is recently, well, a few years ago, built a new wastewater treatment plant, and now they're finding out that they're having to go back into that facility and make, I think, the, the manager up there estimated in the neighborhood of $4 million worth of improvements in order to meet these new phosphorus limits. I don't know if you would call it, it an advantage or not, but we do, we are in a somewhat unique situation in that we're designing and constructing a new facility, and we'll be incorporating those costs into that new plant, and hopefully, we won't have to make improvements at the existing plant in this interim period of time in order to meet those limits. That would be my biggest concern, and, and I think that we probably have gotten some assurances from the MPCA that we would not be required to do that as long as our project stays on track and, and is completed by that 2000, the year 2010 date that we had indicated in our facilities plan.
All right.
That may have a bearing on, on whether the council chooses to participate in that lobbying effort, is, I guess, the point I'm trying to make.
There'll be more discussion at the Public Works Committee. Councilmember Dawkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, didn't we get that writing in, that assurance from them that as long as our plant was up and running by 2010, we didn't have to treat the phosphorus at the current plant, right?
As long as we followed through with the facilities plan and there weren't any major delays.
Okay. Thank you.
I had already made my comment about the new business, that's the, which I commented about when the licenses were approved. Any other announcements, committee meetings, finance, Councilmember Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, finance committee will not meet next week.
Public Works, Public Safety, Doug?
Tuesday, April 10th, 4:45.
April 10th, 4:45, Public Works, Public Safety. Labor?
Mr. Mayor, tentatively, 4/11 at 4:45, Wednesday.
April 11th, 4:45, Labor Committee. Community Development?
12 April, Thursday, 4:45.
April 12th, Thursday, 4:45 for Community Development. Anything else? If not?
Dennis? Oh, yes. I need to be excused from the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Then we will go on to our two department reports, and I'll call on Mr. Bruce Peterson, the Director of Planning and Development Services for the city of Wilmer, for your annual report. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Heike, members of the council. This report will follow a fairly similar process as previous years. The department annual report covers four major areas, those being economic, community development, planning and zoning, building inspection, and the rental housing inspection On page four, you might note, we have a staff directory listing professional certifications and contact information. Also detailed on that page are the, is a breakdown of the work items that typically occur under the four major headings that I just outlined. The following pages, five and six, deal with the staff, staffing for the department, again, the Community Development Committee roster, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals rosters, so you can reacquaint yourself with the volunteers that serve on those boards. I'll spend a few minutes dealing with the topic of economic and community development. occur under the four major headings that I just outlined. The following pages, five and six, deal with the staff, staffing for the department, again, the Community Development Committee roster, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals rosters, so you can reacquaint yourself with the volunteers that serve on those boards. I'll spend a few minutes dealing with the topic of economic and community development. That's the broadheading for this report. I'm pleased to report that we had no changes to staff or staffing levels in 2006. We did have some professional advancement within the department. Tom Rosemeyer, the Building Inspector, received his full certification as a Minnesota Building Official in 2006. And Krista Krupa, the Staff Clerical Person, has been certified as a Building Permit Technician, which allows her to do plan review and issue permits for minor projects. Staff continues to work with a variety of local organizations such as a Design Center, the Community Marketing Coalition, Builders Association, Economic Development Commission, and the Willmar Area Development Corporation. It says cooperation, but it's supposed to be corporation. Megan Sauer, the City Planner in the department, serves as the web maven for the Minnesota chapter of the American Planning Association. Megan does that as a volunteer on her own time and has done a very nice job of keeping up the chapter's website for them. Recently, I was elected to serve as a Board Representative for Southwest Minnesota on the Minnesota chapter of the American Planning Association Board of Directors. Brief review of construction, we'll get more deeply into this when we do the building inspection report. Total valuation of construction in 2006 was a little over $42 million. This represented a 13% decrease over 2005, but is still an increase of 13% over the 10-year average. Commercial and industrial construction values increased slightly in the year, over the year 2005, but we showed a 41% increase in the number of permits issued. Residential construction volume and value both decreased by approximately one-third compared to 2005. The largest projects authorized by permit in 2006 included Walmart, Best Buy, the county maintenance building, Relco Unisystems additions, Cashwise Foods remodeling, Minwest Technology Machine Shop, First Baptist Church expansion, Willmar Air Service Hangar, Service Masters Maintenance Building, the Shops of Willmar, and the McDonald's Restaurant. This commercial and industrial development represents a nice expansion of the Willmar tax base. Staff spends a considerable amount of time working with large projects, providing technical assistance. Some of these projects the past year would have included the Waterview Business Park, which was very time-consuming, working with Minwest Technology Campus, Willmar Fabrication, and working with Jay Herzog and the mall people for the Fifth Street Southeast Connection. The technical assistance offered by staff, and this is not just our department staff, but by staff in general, provides a, a really good forum for positive public contact. Staff continues to work with the Economic Development Commission on projects that require financial assistance. In 2006, we assisted Minwest, the Minwest Campus and the companies of Novatek, Epitopics, Life Science Innovations, which all received Job Z and tax abatement benefits. Willmar Fabrication received Job Z benefits as well as a Minnesota Investment Fund Loan. The funds for this MIF loan were actually made as a grant to the city and as the loan funds are repaid to the city, the city can recapture that $400,000 for use on other projects. Staff sits on the Economic Development Commission's Finance Committee, which reviews requests for assistance under a number of different economic development programs. I'm pleased to report that we are down to three active tax increment financing districts. They are the Phoenix on Fifth Project, which is a redevelopment district, the Relco Unisystems Project, which was an economic development district, and the Lakewood BK Properties Project, which was a redevelopment district. In 2006, there were a series of meetings held to solicit public input for the comprehensive plan. Attendance was reasonably good. I think we had over 80 people at our series of meetings. The public comments are being used to develop the land use goals and policies, which will serve as the legal basis for future zoning and subdivision ordinances. The comprehensive plan process has not moved as quickly as we had hoped due to a lot of activity in specific development projects, but we still hope to have the plan complete by mid to late 2007. Our inspection staff were very busy with the process of hangar construction and relocation. Due to the complexity of the hangar relocation, it did consume a considerable amount of staff time. The city filed an application for a $1 million grant from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. These grant funds were pledged to the city by 2005 legislative action and we should be able to draw on those funds very soon. These grant dollars are intended to reimburse the city for land acquisition cost overruns and to assist in financing the cost of tea hangers. The Federal Environmental Review has been completed and we are simply in the, in the comment receiving phase now. With the opening of the new airport in September 2006, the former site is closed to air traffic. Planning is underway for infrastructure and roadway improvements and the site demolition and improvement work is scheduled to begin this summer. Ultimately, the expanded industrial park will include the partial vacation of Highway 40, a realigned Willmar Avenue Southwest, and the extension of County Road 47 linking Highway 40 and Highway 12. Couple of weeks ago, we were somewhat surprised to hear some census estimates that reported that between the years 2000 and 2006, the countywide population had decreased by 175 people. We don't believe that that number is substantiated. I'm still working to find out where those exact numbers came from or what the basis for that estimate was, but we do know that during that period in Willmar alone, over 500 housing units were constructed with a similar amount of housing being constructed in the balance of the county. We don't believe it's conceivable that there's been any exodus of population or increase in commuters that could have offset those gains. It's interesting to note that during that same time period, countywide employment increased by over 5%, which further weakens the validity of the recent population estimates. Our city unemployment rate remains a very healthy 4%. As shown later in the building inspection report, housing construction declined from 67 units in '05 to 45 units in '06. This was due more to the media-driven perception that a housing crisis exists than to an actual economic problem. A suitable number of residential lots still remain for development and the sale of existing homes is improving. We believe that for the most part, the housing needs of Willmar and the workforce are being met. The city of Willmar continues to be actively involved in marketing the greater Willmar community. Participation in the Community Marketing Coalition focuses on our image as an all-American city. The Community Marketing Coalition, again, is involved in marketing image, not in specifically marketing a particular group of businesses or, or for a commercial purpose. Staff works with the EDC Marketing Group to promote economic development and business development. This past year, we spent a lot of time working to market the Minwest Technology Campus. That will continue, though the shift this year will be to marketing our industrial park. And RFP was recently sent out to local realtors to solicit their assistance in the marketing and sales of industrial park properties. Staff works with the EDC on the business retention, expansion, and recruitment program. This group deals with businesses of all sizes and it's very similar to the work of the Chamber of Commerce Grow Minnesota program, except the EDC program is conducted countywide and makes a greater attempt to get to more of the small businesses. These are both good programs in that they alert the EDC and city staff to potential issues being experienced by businesses so that we can deal with those businesses to help them solve the problems before they have a negative business impact. 2007 has started out to be a busy year. Major projects being dealt with in 2007 include the Waterview Business Park, redevelopment of the former Willmar Airport, the Fifth Street Southeast Connection between Willmar Avenue and 19th Avenue, and the completion of the comprehensive plan. The overall economic health of Willmar remains good and staff continues to work to assure progress for the community. Pages 12 and 13 summarize the collection of fees by the department and provide a 10-year history of construction activity for the community. You will note that for the year 2006, the fees collected by the department declined. They were at approximately $476,000. This decline is commensurate with the decrease in construction that occurred in, in construction Moving ahead to the Planning and Zoning Report, note briefly that it is a requirement of the Willmar City Charter that the Planning Commission provide an annual report. Incorporated by reference into the report is the 2007 to 2011 Capital Improvements Report. Addendum A, which is also part of this report, summarizes the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals action on specific land use and zoning applications. The Planning Commission is probably one of the busier volunteer commissions or boards that the council has. There were 23 regular meetings held in 2006. I think the Planning Commission is a pretty sharp group. They represent varied interest and their diversity really allows for some good discussion and thorough review of land use issues. Bottom of that page outlines some of the significant matters and issues that were before the Planning Commission in 2006. I won't summarize those at this point. You can do that in your leisure. Issues that are expected to come before the commission in 2007 include commercial retail development in the southeastern part of the community, the completion of the comprehensive plan, beginning work on the subdivision ordinance update, capital improvements planning, continued redevelopment planning for the old airport, and joint city-county township planning for development in our periphery areas. We'll continue to work with Community Ed and Rec and the Design Center on trail and pathway and park planning. Again, addendum A is a narrative and graphic review of the types of land use applications that the Planning Commission dealt with in 2006. For those of you that are getting tired, one look at the colors in there that Krista put in the report should definitely bring everybody back around. Page 24, looking at zoning and nuisance complaints for the year 2006, they were up 18% over 2005. It's nothing we're proud of. It's something we're trying to take a greater enforcement approach to. I think the reason that the complaints are up is just because the public feels more comfortable and they become a lot more active in contacting our office and letting us know when they see, see violations. The high visibility notice system works well and reduces clerical time. About 100% compliance is obtained using the enforcement process that we have. We're very appreciative of the work that the Police Department and the city attorney do to help staff with compliance issues. Bottom of that page shows a three-year comparison of the different types of complaints that staff has dealt with. The building inspection report provides a very detailed summary of construction activity in 2006. Again, commercial and industrial construction was up, residential construction was down. The new commercial and industrial permits last year totaled 40. This was an increase of 90% over 2005, so we're very pleased to see the direction that our commercial tax base is taking. We also had 10 permits for churches and school activity last year and although these are primarily non-taxable activities, they do add to the social infrastructure of the community. It's noteworthy that the Rice Hospital addition and remodeling project was completed in '06 and all the final inspections have been made. Minwest Technology Campus currently has four projects ongoing on their campus, all begun in the year 2006. We are anticipating that the hangar projects will be cleaned up this spring and the hangar work will be finished with the exception of the new tea hangar that's being, that will be bid and constructed soon. And the Walmart project is underway with a late summer 2000 completion date anticipated. The city of Willmar currently enforces the 2000 Minnesota State Building Code. In May of 2007, the city will consider and have the opportunity to adopt the new 2006 state building code. The fee schedule used by the city remains the 1994 Uniform Building Code fee schedule. You'll note on page 28, a summary of the major projects for the year 2006. And the pages 29 through 33, I'm sorry, through 32 summarize all the construction activity for 2006 and there's a lot of data there. If you have any questions after you've gone through it, feel free to contact myself or Complete the report by spending just a minute dealing with the rental inspection housing program. In 2006, there was an increase in the number of units inspected and the number of licenses issued. 1,775 units were inspected and a total of 246 operating licenses were issued. The program remains, I guess, a benefit to the community. We've got the majority of the landlords onboard where they're very cooperative. There remain several that are consistent in thwarting the process by failing to show up for inspections. As you might expect, they're typically the landlords that have the poorest looking and the poorest maintained properties and the ones that have the tenants that generate the greatest number of complaints. We believe everyone benefits from the program and that it is a worthwhile investment by the city to conduct this program. The final page of the report contrasts the number of inspections conducted and the licenses issued for the rental program over the past six years. It's very evident from looking at the charts that the program is cyclical in nature and that there is a definite ebb and flow to the workload associated with this process. Be happy to take any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Bruce, for a very thorough report. Councilmembers, any, councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, thank you for the report. I note on page 24, in the complaints section, that signed complaints were way down and I presume that that would have something to do with the change in the ordinance that we made last year.
I, I think that it is absolutely attributable to that fact. The requirement that we now have the portable sign permits, the applicants for a portable sign permit post $100 check that they get back after they've fully complied with the terms of their permit, has really helped the enforcement for those types of sign activities. Periodically, Public Works will have to go out and gather one and there is a $100 forfeiture. And interestingly enough, the company that that's happened to the most has been a metropolitan sign company that just doesn't quite understand the local enforcement issue. But I, I think it has been a, a good, good approach for the community to take with regard to those portable signs.
Thank you. Any other councilmember? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, I was doing some math here. On page 10, it said that for the period of 2000 to 2006, we had 525 housing units constructed. And on page 22, you have the number of lots platted. I did some addition there through, from 2000 to 2006, it says we had 906 lots platted and 525 homes constructed. That leaves 381 empty lots in, is that correct? Would that be correct?
I'm, I'm trying to do the math for 2000 to 2006 in my head. I'm not coming up with 900, but 650, 660, somewhere in that area for lots platted during that same time period. Maybe I had it wrong. But yeah, there's no question that there are, there's a substantial number of lots that have been planted that are undeveloped and I think that's reflected in the fact that this is the first year in many years we haven't had any developer request for improvements in new subdivisions.
Because of that, do we need to be concerned as a city as far as any new developments? Say somebody came to town next month, they said we want to open up 100 lots in southwest Willmar or 50 lots, whatever it be. Is that something you'd look at or if they were going to pay for it and bond through the city, would you look at it differently?
I think it always behooves the council to take a measured approach to looking at that type of development. There's a big difference between the developer that wants to use the city's bonding authority to pay for infrastructure and only carry a partial responsibility by virtue of a letter of credit as opposed to a developer that might come in and offer to pay cash for the improvements in his subdivision. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, on the three TIF districts, how many years are left in them? Do you know? Do you know?
Um...
Phoenix on Fifth, that should be done pretty soon, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's five or six years out, so, and that would be the longest district that we have left. So unless there are additional tax increment financing districts that would begin, we could actually have all our districts wrapped up within that six-year period, I believe. It's no longer the tool of choice for economic development.
All right, thanks.
Ron, you want to say something else?
Please, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to correct that number, there's, it comes out to a hundred and sixty-seven empty lots presently in Wilmer.
Couple of quick questions. Bruce, what year are we in now for job Z?
We are in year three, I believe. The final year is two thousand fifteen, though the, as you might be aware, the governor has recommended that that be extended to be made virtually a perpetual basis, and then communities would have the ability to negotiate timeframes on projects.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is electronic billboards. I had left you a voicemail on this. This is an issue that's coming up in the suburbs around Minneapolis. Is that something that we need to think about out here in Wilmer?
I'm not really concerned about electronic billboards. First of all, the city of Wilmer's ordinance does not allow any new billboards. The issue may come from conversion of existing billboards that do have the right to exist, so it's certainly something that we're watching to see what the league does. They have filed a brief on behalf of the city of Minnetoka, I know, in their fight. We periodically have to deal with the issue of rapidly changing messages on some of the individual signs that businesses put up on their property, and our ordinance has clear language in there that deals with simulated movement or activity on these signs. It's rather subjective, so it's definitely something we need to keep our eye on and make sure that it doesn't become an issue. It definitely can be a safety problem. They're very distracting.
For the council, electronic billboards are billboards that oftentimes have like a television screen in them, and then they have signs around it that can be purchased or leased, and it's very profitable for the people that own these billboards. You know, a static billboard with just one sign that's painted or put on like wallpaper, you know, a sign like that might generate five or six thousand dollars a year. An electronic billboard can generate fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year, and they're very distracting in, in high-traffic zones. And Minnetoka is one city that's finding that they're causing fender benders and everything like that, because people are distracted by studying the television as they're driving down the street and not keeping their eye on the road. So they're trying to, they're trying to redo their ordinances, but the companies got there before the ordinances were rewritten, and they're, they're actually, you know, it's difficult now because now they're in court over this stuff.
Well, they've raised some interesting issues in whether or not the companies were forthright in their application process, but I do have to admire the way the city of Minnetoka handled it by simply shutting off the electrical power to the billboards. I thought that was a nice enforcement approach.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Any other comments from council members? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Rich, are you ready to go? I'd like to welcome our city attorney, Richard Running, for his annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Two weeks ago, you heard from the police chief on the arrest report. A good part of my report deals with the prosecution of those individuals that were the subject of the arrest you heard about two weeks ago. Some of the numbers we'll look at, you'll see, will parallel very closely the numbers that the chief told you about two weeks ago. On page one, I mentioned that in addition to adult prosecution, I am also responsible for the juvenile traffic offenses, being misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor DWIs, and then any petty misdemeanor traffic offenses that are committed by people sixteen years of age or older that have not attained, attained the age of eighteen. Why the legislature decided the city prosecutors should be responsible for misdemeanors and gross misdemeanor DWIs, and then not the other misdemeanor traffic offenses is beyond me, but that's the way the legislature has it set up. With respect to adult crimes, you probably recall that I'm responsible for petty misdemeanors, misdemeanors, and a number of the gross misdemeanors. Petty misdemeanors for two thousand six, we had twenty-four that were set for bench trials, bench trials being a judge trial without a jury present. This compared to thirty-five set in two thousand five, and thirty-two in two thousand four. Of those, twenty-four, eighteen dealt with traffic matters, most of which would be speeding cases where people just weren't about to admit that they were speeding. The other six cases comprised of petty thefts, drug paraphernalia, and underage consumption cases. Page two talks about the misdemeanor cases, which of course is the bulk of the prosecution. In two thousand six, we opened four hundred and one jury trial case files. What that means is people appeared at traffic court, arraignment court on Wednesday morning and pled not guilty. When they plead not guilty, then that means we're automatically setting up a file for a jury case. You'll see the breakdown at the bottom of page two. Assault cases, which are both domestic assaults and other, otherwise, in other words, when the statutory requirements to be a domestic are not met, but it's still an assault. We had seventy of those files in two thousand six compared to fifty-nine in two thousand five. Underage consumption cases were up slightly from two thousand five. We had fifteen in two thousand six. No insurance jumped twenty-five or obviously fifty percent. Seventy-five no-insurance cases, there were fifty in two thousand five. Driving after revocation, sixty-six, there were forty-two in two thousand five. Theft cases were down two. DWI misdemeanor cases were up six. Order for protection, HRO cases were up one, with twenty of them being in two thousand six. DAS and driving after cancellation, fifty compared to twenty in two thousand five. The DAS, the driving after revocation, the no-insurance are the three areas in particular. If you recall the chief's report from two weeks ago, the arrests were up considerably, and obviously there's a direct correlation between the arrests his department makes and the number of people that come to court and plead not guilty, and so we end up setting up a jury trial file on them. In addition to the officers having computers in their car and being able to check registrations, I think one other reason we're seeing a lot of those types of cases, particularly the no-insurance, is, and I think I mentioned this last year, and if you've thought about it, when you go by your tabs, you no longer have to provide the insurance information. Why the legislature changed that, I have no idea, but I think that's probably the principal reason why the no-insurance cases are up, because you don't need to prove you've got insurance when you get your license tabs. Changing, or moving to page three, gross misdemeanors. Gross misdemeanors hit a new all-time high. We had a hundred and eleven long-form gross misdemeanor cases in two thousand six, a hundred and seven in two thousand five. Broken down at the bottom of page three, we had forty-seven of those would be aggravated or gross misdemeanor DWI cases. Driving after cancellation IPS, we had nineteen compared to seventeen in two thousand five. The gross misdemeanor thefts, as I've indicated in parentheses, that's when the dollar value is two hundred and fifty dollars or more, and on up to five hundred dollars. At five hundred dollars, it switches over to a felony. In any event, we had nine of those in two thousand six, and we had six in two thousand five. Unfortunately, school bus stop arm violations did not change much. We had twenty-nine last year. We had thirty in two thousand five. No-insurance cases, gross misdemeanor no-insurance cases mean you've had three cases, three charges within a ten-year time period. We had six of those last year. We had one in two thousand five. Additional court hearings mentioned on page four, you'll see I've listed them there. In two thousand six, I was scheduled for nine hundred and ten court hearings. This is in addition to the jury trials that were scheduled. One reason that went up considerably from the six hundred and eighty-six in two thousand five is the court has changed the procedure. When a person appears in arraignment court and pleads not guilty, their case is set for a jury trial and a pre-trial. The court has now decided that in addition to a pre-trial, if the case is not resolved at a pre-trial, within a week of the scheduled jury trial date, we're having what are called trial management conferences, one last attempt, in the court's opinion, to dispose of the case without going to the expense of calling in a jury and having a jury case, and that did result in a considerable increase in the number of appearances. Police investigations, if you recall from prior years, the police officers send over numerous investigation reports for my review. They aren't comfortable charging them out without my reviewing them first. In two thousand six, we had eighty-nine investigations come over for review. This is up from sixty-two in two thousand five. Of the eighty-nine that came over, fifty-three files we denied prosecution on, twenty-seven were accepted for prosecution, and the ballots were sent back to the police department for further investigation. Crime victim notifications by statute were required to notify crime victims, and we send out a questionnaire. If there's a financial loss that's indicated in the police report, we send a claim restitution form that they can complete and file with the court seeking restitution from the defendant, which if the defendant is convicted, then the victim is entitled to restitution in an amount determined by the judge. Two thousand six, we sent out eighty-seven crime victim notifications. This compares to sixty-five in two thousand five. Civil matters, Bruce already mentioned the rental housing inspection and zoning enforcement. There were a number of criminal citations filed with the court that we prosecuted for that. There was one civil case that we actually sued out, which, as you may recall, dealt with the property on Litchfield Avenue and Ann Street. Human Rights Department, we had two new complaints filed with the Department of Human Rights. Both of these cases are still pending. Malpractice, medical malpractice, for the first time last year, the city was actually named as a defendant in a medical malpractice case. Obviously not unusual for Rice Hospital to be named, but the city had never previously been named. After considerable discovery and a lengthy day of depositions in the cities, I convinced the plaintiff's attorney that the city did not belong in that case, and he did agree to dismiss the case against the city. Other miscellaneous civil matters, collection letters sent over by Mr. Oken's office, the city sent out, or the city attorney's office sent out eight collection letters during two thousand six, and as I previously mentioned, under other litigation, there was just the one civil action dealing with rental housing compliance that was started on behalf of the city in two thousand six. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rich. Council members? Anything anybody wants to ask? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have anything to do with identity theft?
Other than it driving me crazy?
I didn't see it in here as an item.
I prosecute some of the identity theft. The county attorney's office prosecutes most of it. The false, I, false name, false name and/or date of birth to a police officer, I prosecute. If it's actually prosecuted as felony forgery because of how they've used their false identification, then that goes to the county attorney's office. But I wasn't exaggerating. The identity theft is literally taxing the system to the max. The police department, the courts, the probation departments, the prosecutor's offices, when you get a conviction, you still don't know sometimes, you know, who the person is you've just convicted. Probation doesn't know who they're dealing with. It's just unbelievable, and it's getting worse.
I imagine it's going to continue to get worse.
I, yeah, I think it is. I don't know the answer to the problem, but it is a major, major problem. The people in the police department are spending many, many hours trying to deal with it. The sheriff's department, of course, in booking and fingerprinting so forth. It's just, it's out of control.
Well, thanks for your report. I always look forward to it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reese?
Rich, I was amazed by your point that you are scheduled for nine hundred and ten court hearings. I can't believe it.
I couldn't believe that number was right either, but like tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, got fifteen pre-trials scheduled, starting at two-thirty, and they were scheduling twenty to twenty-five in an afternoon, and the public defenders got to the point that because there's a number of them over there, they would just plead the person not guilty and leave, because they didn't want to sit there from two-thirty till five-thirty or whatever time it was we got to them. And I convinced them that if it was going to be effective to have pre-trials, you couldn't set any more than fifteen, but, which is what's set for tomorrow, but, you know, multiply fifteen times fifty, there's seven hundred and fifty pre-trials right there, and then add to that the trial management conferences that I indicated they've started now to make one last-ditch attempt to get rid of a case before it actually goes to trial. So, yeah, it's, but, you know, look at the numbers. Look at how the cases have gone up for the misdemeanors and, and the gross misdemeanors.
Look at two thousand four, six hundred and four.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, it is.
Anyone else? Rich, you keep the city safe, and you keep the staff and the elected officials safe.
We're trying.
Very much appreciate that. Your experience with that medical malpractice situation, which you were able to deflect, what does that teach us, or, you know, are we, is that something we should be concerned about, or do we need some extra coverage in that area, or?
I don't think we do. I, I'm not really sure why the plaintiff's attorney named the city. It's clear that the hospital has more than adequate coverage for practically any case that could come up, so I, I think the plaintiff's attorney was looking for deeper pockets, figured, didn't know at the time the lawsuit was started what kind of coverage the hospital actually has, and figured, you know, that they could make the city responsible if there wasn't adequate coverage. I don't think he would have been successful in making the city responsible, because I think it's pretty clear in the charter that they're independent, they have the right to sue and be sued, and the only time the city would get involved is if it was something to the point where the hospital was on the brink of bankruptcy, and I just can't imagine a medical malpractice case that would go to that extent.
Okay, all right. Thanks again, Rich.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda for tonight. Is there anything else that council members wish to bring up? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.